So very welcome back to the studio and with a new setting. And before we start with our next speaker, I just want to address that Jeanne Slibkes' experience, "Lipke Burner", a VR documentary, is also possible to see in the festival on Splend Palace and in the museum itself. So those who live in Latvia Riga, welcome to try it out. And voila, we're moving to our next and last speaker for this case studies session. And I am very thrilled to present you Jeanne Marchalot, coming from France Television. And it's very nice that this morning we had really people, creators mostly, creators, collaborators, academia. And here we have a broadcaster and distributor. And I'm looking forward for your presentation. Before we start, I briefly represent you our next speaker's background, which is very rich. Jeanne has over 23 years' experience in production and post-production, mostly on TV series and dramas in Paris, France. She also has studied the TV series drama and feature narrative language, created professional trainings on TV series, writing and showrunning, and taught the economy of digital and mass media at the University of Paris. She joined France Television in 2019 to create the VX Fix post-production studio on the soap Chronicles of the Sun. Since the 1st of July of 2020, she is in charge of the storytelling research related to the new XR technologies at the France Television Innovation and Prospective Department. So France TV Story Lab is a co-producing documentaries and fictions in AR, VR, mobile devices and Quest. So Jeanne, very nice to see you here live with us. Pleasure. The floor and microphone is yours.
Yes, thank you very much Eva. And thank you for the festival to receive me today, which is nice to be, you know, full real, not online. So yes, I'm gonna talk to you about VR and XR and about issues regarding XR storytelling through all the projects that France Television is co-producing, actually. And it's quite new for France Television to have a department which is, aim is to co-produce XR experiences and with, in order to catch a wider and a younger audience with new digital contents. So it's a real big and new challenge for France Television as a classic broadcaster to co-produce such experiences for users and to explore new immersive experiences. Because we know that young people are not attracted anymore by TV. So we have to think about contents that go, thought for them, made for them, and on mobile devices and also on nets. So it's really a necessity to explore new storytelling and new media. And VR and AR are the only way really to be absolutely immersed in a story and be part of it. So the Story App is the department, as you said, in France Television that is co-producing AR, VR and XR free app available about films and documentaries. And also we are co-producing VR for Quest. So our aim is to co-produce stories that matter with new technology and with great subjects and topics such as women, environment, handicap. And our aim is really to question our society and our world nowadays. So my goal is also to challenge the storytelling and to experiment the present and the future with immersive experiences and stories. We work with producers in France, directors and authors who sometimes are really known at the international level. So because there are, France is the second country in the world producing VR, just after the United States and before Canada. So we are really, it's really a new branch in France and new opportunities as well. And I'm really glad that now France Television is coming on these VR experiences and to show our really great talents in France. And just for the information, the only two public broadcasters that are co-producing XR in France, it's Arte and France Television. So how did that work? I mean, how do I work with producers? So there are two steps. First, the development and the ARD of the project, and then the production of the product. Actually, I've got three projects on production.
Right now?
Sorry, six projects on production.
Right now?
Yeah, just right now, yeah. And two of them have already been available now for all the public as an LBI, the Location Based Experience, or on store. So our VR LBI is a documentary game about Lady Sapiens and is directed by Camille Du Valera. We have also Seven Grams, which is an AR documentary available on stores for mobiles. And we had, we won last night, sorry, last night at the Prix Europa, the special commendation for the best European online media project. So that's very nice. And also have two others, AR project for kids called La Petite Danseuse, The Little Dancer, and Bibliocat. And they're for 2022. I've already got two projects that are on production. One is a 360 film for Quest, made, directed by Yann Kunnin, who is quite famous in France, and written by Charlotte Yatt and Sabrina, sorry, Sabrina Calvo. And also, which would be a very highlight project next year, it's Fight Back. It's a video game about self-defense for women. So the aim of this video game is to teach women how to fight. And it's made, it's directed by Céline Tricard, who made The Key. And I'm very glad that she's working on the project that France Television is co-producing, actually. So all those projects are made also to reach a wider and a younger audience because younger adults and young ones do not watch TV anymore. And so the question is how to create content for them? How can a broadcaster such as France Television can really give the opportunity to the young ones to have contents that really talk to them? And so for that, those digital content must be not only our broadcast team and they must be on devices they use. So they're really, it's our mission as a public broadcaster also to have AR films on smartphones because that's for everybody. When we have a documentary or fiction on stores, that means that everybody can upload it, can see it, can do, can experience it and from home, you don't have to go somewhere. So it's very important because that's really for everybody. I'm gonna speak about a bit more about two projects. Well, more than two projects, but a bit deeply that how we met them, what was the process? So first to talk about Lady Sapiens, which is quite a global project because we have different contents for different targets with this project and different people working on. So it's about prehistoric women. What Lady Sapiens takes the user back 3, I'm sorry, 38,000 years ago. So when you put the ads at home, you are the prehistoric period. And you discover the true face and true life of women at that time. She was an artist, an artist, a clan leader. And so now she tells a different story of mankind, in fact. And this is a multifaceted project in collaboration between Little Big Story and France Television and produced also with Ubisoft, the French video game editor. And we are using for Lady Sapiens vivid images from Fight Club Primal. And it's really new because there's also a documentary on that topic, on Lady Sapiens, that was on, on French TV. And it's also a VR interactive experience. And it's also a 360 film. And it's also seven short films for kids that are on educational platform. So that's really important as well to have this kind of global project and this kind of unique collaboration between a producer, a broadcaster and Ubisoft. And it's a real big VR adventure that will be available on Museum in France, in Paris, and I suppose all over the world because it's really unique. There's somebody who's working in the ZDF, just has got the same job that I have. And we talked about Lady Sapiens. He thought it was just great, a very great idea. And the thing is that in the VR experience, the user is Lady Sapiens. So the impact of really think about what she was at those times is really more powerful. And I'm really proud of being part of this project. Well, in fact, I'm really proud, being proud of all the projects I have because I'm trying to be, you know, to have a proposal that can impact a lot of people and different people and also the youngest. So that's really, really great. And also, so we have Seven Grams. So as I said, we had the special commendation for best European online media project yesterday, yesterday night with the Prix Europa. And that's really, really great. So Seven Grams is a documentary on AR about the minerals in our smartphone and how those minerals are, sorry, sometimes I'm losing my English. How those resources are exploited in Congo. So that's really the dark side of this exploitation in that particular country. And Seven Grams is that was been written and directed by Karim Ben-Kerifa, who made also The Enemy. And it's really, we tested the app on young people, you know, they're about 16, 17. And they were really happy because for once they have a content that goes toward them on the mobile and that they use technologies that they know. Because of course, every teenager can know what a lenses, what a lenses is, what AR is, because they're all using Snapchat. So and so that make them concerned about the topic and the issue. And I could see how they were, yes, happy about it, you know. So and that's, that's the way to make them concerned about this issue about minerals that we use for our smartphones and to, for them to apprehend the cost of it, the human cost of it. Because in the app, there's an animated short film that tells the story of Chance, that was, is a young man, that was a kid that was working on as a miner, as a soldier as well, child soldier. So we, that Seven Grams is really what we want to do in France Television as well is use new technology to create content and to have a real big message on it. So that's why it's important for us to explore those new technologies. And, you know, with Seven Grams, we want to really get the youngest, the teenagers concerned by how to use a smartphone and how to have a more concerned consumer about all this, in fact. So and about the production and phones and other designs. And it's really important to use a smartphone to just tell all of this. So that's an important project. So while we are using AR and VR, it's also to, so to impact more, to have more concerned subjects and issues. And it's also to learn by gaming. So that's why I have a project called "When She Gets Out", it's about the little dancer of De Gaulle. And it's a fantastic journey through artworks displays at the Museum of Orsay in Paris. It's written by Gordon and Marie Selier. And so Marie, the little dancer, she wants to bring life her frozen, it's called Prince. So she will go from painting to painting and try to find ingredients for a magic potion that will, that she will give to her frozen prince, make sure that it will move out of his statue. So it's for kids, about 60, oh, 68, sorry. And it's an AR story. And we will present it at the Musee d'Orsay in Metz, Ammer. And afterwards, it'll be on stores at that time. And it's really an invitation to our journey for children and to make them aware of dance, music, arts and some very masterpieces that are well-known at the Musee d'Orsay and maybe to bring them afterward at the museum for them to see all those masterpieces. Well, that would be great. And I will have another project for children before Christmas. It's an invitation to read books. So that's really important as well. It's an app, an AR app. And it's a journey that you, the children would be able to do to, or at home, or in libraries, to discover the universe of a French writer for children's book. So it's like a quest that they have to split out ingredients to, well, at the end, win the quest. So it's really exciting because we really wanted to, with this project, to make them aware our important stories, books are. And it's, so it's Bibliocat and it's written by Gordon and André Charac. And I'm really looking forward to it. And we are, our first French writer is Timothée de Fontbel. And we will present this project at a festival of children's literature, beginning of December in Paris. And also because libraries are, less children goes, go just nowadays in libraries because of their, of the pass, you know, the COVID pass, they don't have it. So it's a way to bring library into their home. So and hopefully they will buy books for Christmas or they will buy the books that Timothée de Fontbel is speaking about, that gave him inspiration when he was a kid and now as a writer. I will also have, so as I said in the introduction, Fight Back will be a main project next year. So Fight Back is a video game, VR video game, developed for Oculus Quest 2. And it's a long-driven initiation to learn gestures for self-defense. And it's directed, written and directed by Céline Tricard. She also directed The Key, that had many, many prizes all over the world. So over the cover of the training, it's a fun adventure game with ant-tracking for, to have combat mechanics. It's a bit like, oh gosh, I'm gonna, Bitzaber. Yeah, it's the same mechanical process in the video game. And so it's an introduction to self-defense techniques for women. I've tested it and it's gonna be really, really fantastic and wonderful. So you can see your hand and they are lighter and you, and you can get power if you put your hands in cycles. You have really magic power. And that's, you know, you feel like Wonder Woman. It's just so exciting. So we used the potential of VR as a tool for learning and developing, sorry, muscle memory to make women conscious about what they can do with their body and then they can say no to any violence they can have in their life. So it's to fight about abuse and discrimination and to, you know, to engage also women to make sure that they can have the right gesture and the self-defense techniques to do that. So that the point of Fight Back is to reveal superpowers. And so that's really very great, in fact, because you feel like, you know, for once, you're just an hero. And so there are difficulties increasing. So you have to be more and more physically engaged in the video game. And also, we discover untold stories because we know that nowadays, finally, women were really important during history, like Lady Sapiens. Lady Sapiens had a very active part in Sapiens Society, which we really cover now because that was not what we were told at school. But in the video game, we will be able also to meet women that had his very brave history during that journey. So we will be able to know, to meet sisters that matter in history but we have, that we have forgotten. And also it's an initiation, as I said, to self-defense. And with an accessible gameplay and a universal storyline, Fight Back can appeal to beginners and also gamers. So that's really important. And that'll be on, maybe, probably next spring. And I'm sure that's gonna be really, a really important project. And I'm really happy to be on it as well. And also, just to speak a little about the project, which is still in development, but it's Empereur and it's already known, because, no, sorry, because this project won the prize of the best pitch last festival in Antis, last June. And it's about handicap. It's about a young woman that's trying to create a contact and talk, talking with a father that, who has lost the way how speaking with a brain attack. And it's really pretty and it's really important and it talks about handicap. And what is important is that the user will be in state of the father and will be able to understand how difficult it is when you have such a handicap. But also, I hope, can be positive as well. So that'd be, it's a project for, it's a VR animated project for Quest as well. So all those projects can tell a bit ingredient about new storytelling and how it looks like and what is it. And when I choose a project for France Television, it's always the story and the story and the story first that guide me in my choices because the basic of the story doesn't change, it's always the same. And we are re-inventing storytelling in a way and with the new technologies. But it's always the same. You have a beginning and then a lot of conflicts and then an end. And that's always, it works since the beginning of our world, the beginning of humankind, actually. What's is different is like new technologies, especially with mobile device, brings, bring contents at home and for everybody and offer an interactivity for the user and for the first time. So the impact is greater and UX experiences are more powerful. And it's a way to, to give the user the opportunity to realize much more how important is self-defense, how important is a woman during, at, as a Sapiens society, to understand more about minerals in our smartphone, etc., etc. So that's, we, we are giving, innovating and immersive direction in those stories. And it's a way to embark a younger audience, to speak to them and to go toward them with those contents, even if it's a documentary. So I was really surprised and happy about the reaction of teenagers that tested Seven Grams because that show really that we are in the right direction, that the thing we, the way we are thinking all those projects and we are creating is the good way to do it. So and we are at France Television in that way, giving new entertainment to our audience, to a wider audience. And we are offering TV program, you know, in an expanded universe, in an expanded label of France Television. So the, and the France TV Story Lab project showed Um, so the, and the France Télévision story, that project shows the diversity of issues, talent, and storytelling, and the quality of new technologies, because now we can propose high-quality, uh, contents level. And the, the storytelling impacts more, because the user is part of the experience. Because the user lives the experience, um, is instead of Lady Sapiens, handicap, um, s- um, a man that cannot speak, or a woman experiencing self-defense, and so. And nothing else can, um, give that, the, um, to the user, and and also the other can be part of the creation of the story during the VR, if there is interactivity. So that's what's really new, and that's what we are exploring at France Télévision. And, um, was it great, the, the price yesterday night at the Prix Europa is great. Because, um, I was saying just afterward, um, just before this keynote, that I'm very happy, because each time we have a project that's going out on stores, we have a price. So it's really, um, that's, that's the way we think also, and that we are in the right direction. Thank you.
Interesting, I have many questions, but I'm happy that we have you in the next panel, so we can address that, probably with other speakers. So maybe just one question, because it's all, it's amazing, of course, that the television is seeing this as, uh, why everything should be broadcasted, and you're going through many different audiences, using different mediums, museums, libraries, all these apps and games, joining partners. But my, my, my question maybe would be about the, the very beginning. Um, how you commission, do you launch a call, or, um, I don't know, how you, uh, how you collect those ideas, or how do you select? Can producers, uh, reach out to you anytime, or there is specific time when you open to, to get new products on board? And, uh, and how about, uh, and it feels like you have a lot of control then about, uh, how you want to develop, because there's, um, uh, Lady Sapiens example, there's a lot of parallel, um, productions happening, like, and then your colleagues on television can broadcast the, the animation, or, or repeat the documentary, et cetera, et cetera.
Um, I, 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 there's two answers, in fact, because you could, in, in your question. Uh, first of all, for, um, the project, how, um, how the project come to me? Uh, how the, do the projects come to me, sorry? Um, uh, well, there are several ways. Um, a producer can, um, send me a project. Um, I can, um, um, have a, like, a, um, call, like, saying, I'm looking project on about the environment, for example. Spe- yeah, we're on a specific topic. Um, that happened just before I had, uh, this job, so last Jul- uh, July last year. Um, so I have two projects about environment, because that was the topic. And I've got one about, um, uh, the problem of water in twenty thirty-eight. So it's this topic. Um, and also, I can also, um, spot a talent I want to work with. And initiate, well, not initiate a project, initiate a relationship that I want, I want to work on a project with, you know, um, a talent that I really think, um, France Télévision would definitely have to co-produce one of the project. Because it's important to keep our talents, and to, and to immerse them to, um, to the audience. So that's really the, the three ways of doing, of having, um, project. Um, and, sorry, I forgot the second, the second, second part of the question.
We're running ta- a bit of time, so I think we can really leave it, uh, all my questions for our next panel.
Okay.
The next panel will be much broader, talking about, uh, distribution a lot, and development, and how, how production gets financed, so I think you will have your part to share, how you do that.
Yes.
So, yeah, voila, uh, we don't have more questions from the audience.
Okay.
And thank you for your, uh, very interesting projects you're working on. And, yeah, see you in the next panel.